Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council Study Session for June 22. We are going to get a presentation on the fluoridation study review first, and then we're going to hear from lots of people on public safety budget topics. But Catherine Miller can come down and introduce our guests. That'd be great.
Thank you, Council President and Council. So yes, today's conversation is the finalized study of fluoridation. We do have Consor here as our lead consultants to help us through the study all along. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lee.
Thank you. My name's Lee Odell. I'll walk through the fluoride implementation study. We give you a quick overview of the preliminary engineering study, some of the findings we developed looking at SEPA and other things, and then talk about next steps and answer any questions that hopefully we can. First, the purpose of this study was really to assess the feasibility of putting fluoride into Spokane's water system and identifying how that would be done and what chemicals we would use and the costs that go along with that. It was kind of a three-phase study. One, first collected data. Second, looked at alternatives and selected a preferred alternative. And then three was developing that into a conceptual design and putting costs for both the capital facilities and the operations of the facilities. So the outcome is really a life cycle cost as well as a 30% design of how you would implement it. And as you know, your water system's very large and complex, eight well stations, 14 wells, 27 well pumps. There's lots of other features in the system. So a big part of the study was really looking at how much equipment would we have to put in? Where's it going to fit? So that's a big, big effect on the outcome of the study. So the preliminary design and environmental assessment, just a quick note first on the SEPA. We did a SEPA checklist as part of the implementation study, published it in May, got comments in, 39 comments. Those are incorporated as part of the study. Because it was a non-project SEPA, there was a determination of non-significance. So if you decide to implement fluoride, that may be revisited as an actual project SEPA. Quick review of the preliminary design of the well station. So at all of your well stations, it became evident that we were going to need new buildings at each facility in order to store fluoride and to feed it. So we couldn't incorporate it into any of the existing facilities. There are requirements for bulk storage, day tanks, and the chemical feed facilities, as well as the monitoring equipment. In addition, some of the sites needed site access improvements for chemical delivery, power upgrades, and security improvements.
Are we waiting till the end for questions, or can we interrupt?
You could. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, what does storing fluoride look like? Is it bags? Is it tanks? Is it? How is it stored?
There's a dry fluoride powder and a liquid fluoride chemical that could be used. That was one of the alternatives we went over with staff. They selected the liquid so it would get delivered in bulk tanker trucks, and it gets stored in liquid tanks with secondary containment around it.
And so you couldn't, you couldn't store this at just a single centralized facility? It has to be at each of these well sites?
It does. The state has a requirement that you have to have a day tank for fluoride, and you manually have to go transfer it from the bulk tank to the day tank every day for feeding to prevent siphoning of the fluoride into the system. So if you didn't store it on-site, there'd be just a lot of truck traffic to deliver it every day. There's also some discussion about sodium hypochlorite in exchange of gas chlorine at your well sites. There could be some synergy in that, but when we looked at the costs, we recognized the city could do both of those or neither or one. So we kind of looked at the costs independently. There, in addition to the secondary containment storage that would be in the buildings for the, for the chemical and the day tanks, there are also a number of other safety improvements that need to go along with that. There's a variety of alarms for overfeeding and operator safety. There's regular calibration and testing of the fluoride analyzer to make sure it's accurately reading how much gets fed in and other monitoring and power and instrumentation requirements. There are several permitting issues. All of the sites would, would need building permits, probably a SEPA review as well. Some of them need shoreline permits. A number of them are historical sites, so they get historical architectural review as well, and some conditional use permit also for, for some of the sites. One of the, one of the things that Washington State requires when you feed fluoride is you feed it to the entire system at once. So it would be a phased approach if you did implement it to build fluoride facilities at each of your well sites and then, and then implement the fluoride at the same time once they're all built. So we developed an implementation schedule over five years to incorporate all the construction that would be needed. And then on to the cost estimates. We did capital and O&amp;M cost estimates. There is a schedule of routine tasks for operating and maintaining the equipment. We use that to build the costs for operations and maintenance. There's safety and monitoring in addition to the operational tasks. So we have, we have different classifications of staff included in that, but overall, it's a total of 2.7 FTEs that are required. And then adding fluoride also changes the type of certification that the operators need. It increases from operator water treatment one level to operator water treatment two level. So additional treatment and training would be needed. So here's a summary of the capital costs and the operation and maintenance costs. A few notes here. The capital costs are shown for the building and the chemical feed systems at each of your well sites. The operation costs are escalated to 2028. So five years from now, if you did decide to implement it, that's when you would start operating them. And we have escalated those costs, and then we provided a range of operations costs. The low range doesn't include a contingency. The upper range includes 30% contingency. So we have published the final report. It incorporates some comments we got on the draft report, including that the fluoride facilities, storage facilities need to be designed to the Spokane municipal code protecting the aquifer. We also will have noted that the city will need to incorporate and update their emergency response plan. There are ancillary elements such as potential places where people could go to get non-fluoridated water that are included in the report. We made note of that and clarified the number of deliveries. So we have a final report at that point, and I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, Lee. So the rest of this is just kind of going over a general understanding. So if a decision were made today, you saw a five-year window that would happen. So really, there's a lot of process obviously involved. First kicking off with the resolution that I know you're all familiar with, this is all based on the completion of this study. There was going to be the public process to understand next steps. So with that, the only takeaway from this slide is there's a lot of other processes that will have to happen. They can certainly be paralleled in a five-year period, but we obviously have to finish the design. We have to go through the permitting work that Lee went through, House Bill 1251 that passed this last session. We want to make sure we followed all those components. Capital funding obviously is needed. We do have the balance of the $4 million from the Accora. It's obviously not enough to construct, so we'll have to understand construction. Getting to O&amp;M, assuming there's some kind of process potentially around rate conversations. So again, just want to paint the picture that there's a lot more decisions and processes that will have to parallel this as we go through. Obviously, hiring FTEs or decisions and budgets that also need to be covered, as well as that staff training and certification. Lee mentioned we're going from one certification of a water system to another. That is a process. So again, just understanding there's processes involved.
So the, the next steps are obviously very resource and time intensive. And so I guess proactively, are you just moving ahead with this, pretending that we're going to approve it? Or is council going to have to approve a resolution to allow you to move forward to expend the resources, time, effort, money, et cetera, on implementation?
At this point, our, our mission was to deliver a study to understand costs, understanding there was another process to take place once the study completed. So we will wait to understand the process that comes next in terms of next steps.
Just, just to be clear, so the process as it was set out is over?
Correct.
This is it?
I have a last slide for that for you.
All right. Very good.
Again, we do have the website. We have the final study up on the website. It has the full process and history of what this study went through, so anyone can follow and get caught up if they, if they choose. Any discussion, though, that we would like to have? Questions?
I have some questions. The, for you, the, let's assume for a moment that it was 1.8 million operating per year. What's that in relation to our current operations for drinking water?
That is a good question. We have our Director of Water here in the, in the center.
Welcome, Lauren.
The, the operational side of that equates to about 3.5% to 5% of our current operating budget.
Okay.
So kind of the, the range in there just on the operations side.
Okay. Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
So is that a 3% to 5%? So if it was, if that was to be applied to, to the rates, would it be a 3% to 5% increase in rates? Is that how that would translate?
Yeah.
So you have to understand, when we talk about rates, there are multiple departments in that rate, right? So when you talk about the water department, yes, it would be around the 3% on a, on a construction, thinking this through different ways, right? You can, you can put rates up to construct and then, and then maintain. So looking at different ways to look at it, the first thing you need to do.
We're just about to operations, yeah.
Right. So it'd be more towards the 4% than to operate it to get up to those dollar amounts. Again, that range is there. To get into that a little bit more, there's nobody in this side of the states right now that has fluoride, so we don't know what our final costs are. That's why we wanted to put forward a range, that 1.8 to 2.4, because we truly don't know until we get bids in and we tell, you know, get folks to come over, they trucking it over, are they putting it on the train? All those decisions will have to be understood in a more granular level to understand where we fall in that range. But on the high end of that range, the 2.4, of course, we want to make sure our eyes are wide open in terms of just understanding what it could be. Obviously, we'd work towards the lesser one at every, every opportunity we have, but that would be in that about 4% range.
Doesn't Cheney do fluoride?
They do the dry form.
Oh.
As the liquid form, there's no one on this side that does the liquid form. Thank you for clarifying.
And Cheney has some, some, some buildings that aren't very secure and, and all kinds of things. When you walk in there, just anybody can add anything to it.
Okay.
Well, at the end of the day, their, their system is, is, you know, profoundly smaller than ours. We're doing 24 billion gallons a year, and Cheney is decimal dust of that in terms of, it truly is a smaller system. So they will have a smaller facilities.
And their natural fluoride content is significantly higher than ours.
And they do have a natural content in...
.3-ish, .35, something like that.
I think that's right. Yeah.
And we haven't raised rates on utilities for this year. Usually, we do it about 3% per year, but we haven't done it for this year.
The 2.9. It was already for this year. It's going into 24 and 25, yes.
But at this point, there's no plans to do that rate increase for '24?
You know, I don't have that information for today. It's all about the fluoridation.
No, I know, but I'm just from, in the department. Has anyone been talking about? Because I've heard that, that we're not going to continue those rate increases into next year.
I think that discussion is still coming forward.
Still coming? Okay. I have a couple more questions for Lee, but on the operations, how much of that is labor versus materials roughly?
Uh, well, I, I would, I, I think it's around 30%, but I could, I have a copy of the report if I could.
Okay. Well, you got someone coming up to tell.
Well, it's in there. Yeah. We can break it down. We have a, somewhat a breakdown there. It's always hard to know how much information to dig into the details.
No, no. Well, that's why we're, we're asking for it.
Yes, of course.
Kind of the best way to break this down, I know a summary here. So this is a, has it operationally, so we have operations and maintenance. So this is going to be, well, it's a combination of both. And if I find the best way, because they have a table that's very detailed, but it has equipment, labor, all of those.
Yeah. For, for example, I mean, we, we kind of did it by well and then added everything in.
Okay.
But just for example, at Well Electric, it's about 180,000 is the labor part of a total of roughly $500,000. So about, about 30 to 40%.
Okay. And then, and maybe it's in the details of the report, but what was the estimate for the product, for the liquid product? What was the pricing that we were estimating?
So at that Well Electric site, it's of, of that 500,000, it's 278,000. So over half.
And that is a logical answer to the way I answered. I worded the question, but I've switched slightly to what's the price per gallon or whatever unit that you're assuming, even though we don't know, because nobody is delivering it to Eastern Washington yet.
Yeah. I don't, I'm trying to think of that detail's fully summarized. Oh, yeah, right here. We had a quote of 40 cents per pound to 50 cents per pound.
Okay.
For delivered in bulk.
And we used the higher one, 50 cents per pound.
Okay. And are there places on the west side that are less, like in the 30, 30 to 40?
The, the only place that's getting bulk of this similar chemical is in Seattle. So it's no one else on the, on this side.
No. I'm from Waukam County, but Linden's not doing that? I thought that Linden was doing that.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if they are, but I know, I know Seattle has large bulk deliveries as well.
Okay. And do you know what they're paying for those?
I do not.
Okay. Okay. And then another question for one of you is, so because we're, this is the, you know, we already add chlorine, we already do things, but we're adding this additional thing. It sounds like we have to upgrade all the facilities, electrical, all of that. Are some, are we going to see some savings in the long term that we will get the benefit of those upgrades, even though it's kind of the last thing, but now we won't have to get those upgrades as soon on all those systems?
So we actually had a quick mention of it, and we're looking at chlorine right now to potentially produce our own. Obviously, if there is any opportunity to have savings, to have one building for both units and those kind of things, we would definitely look to, to save on those things. So we wanted to make sure this is a standalone conversation. But once we get into any kind of a design, we will look for all those opportunities.
But just in terms of newer buildings, newer electrical systems, is that generally going to benefit the whole system, I guess?
If you've got, again, if you've got another reason for more space in that building, it makes sense like the chlorine does. But we won't necessarily just overbuild something for something in the future that we don't know is going to come, because that would potentially be not utilized to extents.
I'm, yeah, I'm talking conceptually, not so much building new, but if you're going to upgrade the electrical system, it seems like, are you going to upgrade it for the entire facility or is it just...
Sure. We would, we would look for that, but that wouldn't be dollars that we would spend from the fluoridation money, right? We would have to find other dollars to, you know, that would be the scope creep, if you will, where you would obviously take care of a few other issues in the building or those kind of things at the same time.
But I guess what I'm saying is there a benefit? And again, we're doing a but-for cost, so I'm, I'm clear on that. But are some of the benefits, if we did a but-for cost, is that generally the systems in those various wells will be upgraded for either no more money or less money than otherwise would because we're doing the fluoride?
Well, I guess my thought on that would be is just get, I mean, as Lee highlighted is that when we evaluated all the sites, the challenge was trying to fit this within inside existing buildings. So it required a, a new structure onsite so it was finding them.
Just real quick, sorry, can you get closer to the microphone?
Sorry, what's that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, so that, as Lee was indicating, we have these new buildings because we couldn't find space within the existing structure to, to fit it in there. So we have a new building, and so the upgrades for the electrical then are, are some modifications to the current site supply. So the actual, like, power supply to the pumps wouldn't be modified, but those transformers, et cetera, electrical upgrades would be, would be required for that specific building. And so that, those are somewhat kind of keeping it separate from overall improvements to the actual well facility building. Is that fully answering your question? I mean, it's like it's kind of separate.
I'm just wondering, are there some benefits?
There are some. Side access, the site power, but, but a lot of the improvements are a new facility. So they don't, they don't get into the existing.
So two, two questions. One is, I, this is the first I've really heard about concerns around chlorination and the need to change or increase the amount that we're chlorinating. So I'm just curious, what's the background on that and what's, what's behind the necessity around that? And then, second, I'm just wondering, in the evaluations of these facilities, as we're talking about potential expansions, what's the impact to the neighborhoods or the housing around where they're located? Have we analyzed that and taken a close look there?
So I'll start with the chlorination. So this is just a study. It's already been presented to council. It's underway right now. It's just a matter of looking, instead of purchasing chlorine, to make chlorine onsite. It's a cost savings over time, and that's the study that's going on right now. So we wanted to be, since we were aware that that study was going to be happening about the same time we were finishing this study, we just wanted to acknowledge if any beneficial co-mingling came about, that we were going to obviously be open to that to make sure we kept everybody's costs down.
Okay. And then the second part?
The answer to the second part is, yes, that was part of the alternatives evaluation. We looked at number of truck trips per year, whether they had to go into residential area to deliver the chemicals and the potential for spills or other, other impacts.
But, but...
Were all part of that.
Did we also analyze, I mean, are the, the sites already right-sized? And if we expand the, the buildings on these sites, is that going to start to encroach on any neighboring housing? That's, that's where I'm, I'm wondering.
We, we did that too, yeah. Did, did site layouts for each of the facility and looked at the access for these trucks are long 50, 53-foot trailers. So some of those had to be moved around and, and access improvements made as well.
Okay.
And then, I think I already know the answer. I just want to confirm it. You weren't asked to do cost benefit analysis of like, if we spent this money in operations every year, how much money would people in the city save on dental care and medical and lost time at work and stuff like that? That wasn't within the scope of the study.
That was not.
Yeah, great. Any other, and Councilmember Kinnear, we don't, can't see you, but if you have any questions?
No, thanks. It was very informative. I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Bingle?
And just for, for quick reference, the city of Spokane, we have a very low fluoridation level naturally, right? Like .05, something like that. And we're trying to get to .7, correct? .6, .7, somewhere in there?
That's right. .7 is the recommended level. You're below .1. Yeah.
So...
Very low.
So we have little, very little fluoridation currently. And so all, basically, all the fluoridation that would be in the water would be something that we'd be adding to that, to the water supply?
The vast majority, yes.
Yeah. Okay. With that being said, we chose the liquid over the, over the powder. And can you give us the reason why we chose the liquid over the powder? Or the dry, excuse me?
Yeah. So we, we got input from all of the operation and maintenance staff. Many of them had worked at other facilities. The dry material in these large systems can, can get flaky and requires a lot of extra maintenance. It also is more costly. So those were, there were a whole evaluation set of criteria. I think it was a unanimous decision to go with the liquid, but that, those were some of the big factors.
I, I appreciate that. I, I agree. When we went to the facilities, the, the liquid ones seemed far more sophisticated than the, than the, than the dry ones. Do we know where the, where the fluoride is produced and how it gets to us here?
There, there are several NSF certified for drinking water fluoride facilities. So the, they're, the liquid chemicals are all licensed in the U.S., but I don't know if they're actually producing it there.
But they're not produced in the United States.
They're, they're, there's different ways to produce it. So we, we, we just made sure we had NSF certified chemical that was... we had NSF certified chemical that was, that we were getting prices for.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think that's, that's what I had.
Could you tell us what NSF stands for?
It's the National Sanitation Foundation. So they, they approve the use of chemicals in drinking water systems.
Okay. Yeah, the reason why I ask is when we were, you know, on our site visits, you see these giant forty-pound bags of the, of the fluoride, you know, with the very scary skull and crossbones logos on them. And, you know, also, you know, property of China, made in China, those kinds of things. And I think that if that's something that we're going to be adding to the water system, I think it's important for, for us to know where it's being sourced from, just as we're moving forward, so.
But the NSF is a United States certification?
It is.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you all for, oh.
So my very last slide.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Is we are now complete on our study. So the contract with the consultants is, is over as of today in terms of finalizing that contract. And again, we'll let the next steps happen, and then whatever informs us from that, we will take action.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
One, one last thing. I just want to say thank you to your team. You guys were very gracious in allowing me to go and do the site visits. You've been very open on all this, as you were doing, what you were doing, and why you were doing it. And I just really appreciate that. So, thank you, guys. Yeah.
We hope to run a very transparent process. And again, I really appreciate the water department's staff, very professional. And what we went through in terms of all the data that we had to put through their, Lauren's team in a very short period of time. So it was a great, great process. So thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. I was going to invite City Administrator Johnny Perkins up to kick the next section off.
Thank you, Council President Beggs. Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. Council members, this morning, we would like to do a presentation as relates to fire and police overtime for 2023. Our presenters, first leading off, will be Fire Chief Brian Schaefer, followed by Chief Lundgren and Shawna Ernst from the Police Department. And then our Chief Financial Officer, Tanya Wallace, will close and give you a summary of the financials as it relates to the overtime, where we are and what our solutions and recommendations are going forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Schaefer.
Oh, good afternoon. I'm just going to wait until the technology's caught up. I think Jacoby's, he's on it. There you go.
You've always got it open, Jonathan.
I know. I want to know.
I've got some, if you need to borrow.
It's the supplementa.
Ian, go ahead.
Supplementa.
So a very, very simple, straightforward, open for questions. Basically, an update for us. Appreciate the support. Two years or so ago, and the recognition that the number of vacancies contributed to the increase in our overtime costs. We needed to do something about it. We were extremely aggressive. We've hired, with the plan, around a hundred people into the organization to predominantly fill necessary vacancies, which do have a contribution to the decrease in overtime. Jacoby, could you hit the next one? Right now, as of today, we have forty vacancies in operations, where the, where the emergency work is, is truly done. But we also have twenty-nine that are set to start on July twenty-four. So Class twenty-two, twenty-three dash one will be graduating next month, and then twenty-two, twenty-three dash two will be starting. The delta there, after our latest class gets out, going into twenty-twenty-four, we'll see eleven vacancies. Now, I say eleven vacancies today. The reality is, we're human, and there is no requirement for our employees to notify us if they intend to retire. They could walk in today and just hand us their paperwork, or contact Department of Retirement Services at the state, and be done. So there's, there's always that, that unknown. We may have a number of people leave at the end of the year, we just don't know. But eleven is much better than we were in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, beginning. So I guess the, you can go ahead and go to the next one, Jacoby. The, the big picture is, next one, please. There you go. The efforts that we put into place last year, and actually at the end of twenty-one, have had a profound impact. Our overtime is thirty-six lower, thirty-six percent lower than it was this time last year. Our, people often ask, and I'm sure your questions are surrounding where the overtime goes, right now, because we do still have those vacancies in the department's budget until we get those graduations next month, predominantly shift coverage. And then second to shift coverage, a lot of those, I know that slide's kind of hard to see, but result as a recruit academy expenses, because we have cadre that we remove from the field, put into the recruit academy to teach. Those dollars are going to be reimbursed as soon as the academy is done, from money that you dedicated to pay for those academies. So we're actually sitting in a pretty good place. If you, if you pro-rate and look at the dollars that you afforded us for overtime, it does look like we're overspent right now, going into the summer. But again, realize that we're going to get the, those overtime monies moved from an existing account over to overtime for the recruit school cost. And then we'll also get all of the employees from twenty-two, twenty-three dash one into the field next month. So I'm expecting us to come in on budget, depending on any significant variable that we may come across. But as always, we want to keep that communication and give you our monthly reports in Public Safety Committee, just how we're doing. And I think that's it. Do you want to try the last slide? Is there any questions that I can answer or that you may have that? Yes, sir.
Yeah, do you, obviously, the increased staffing is hugely beneficial, but do you see also some improvements based on some of the changes that were in the previous contract that was approved?
Those, there's, there's been a profound change. And, you know, it started, it started here, and it included administration, and it included a number of consultants that all contributed to us changing a number of businesses' practices. So, short answer, yes, there's too many to name. You know, we have some structural changes in the collective bargaining agreement. But, you know, candidly, we, we, we added a hundred people. I think probably two or three years ago, I would tell you that forty, fifty percent of our organization is eligible to retire. I checked this morning, thirteen percent is all we have now. We have an extremely young department, which is great for energy and decreasing sick time, you know, less injuries. I think we're, with, with the front loading that you've helped us do, with the funding for the academies, that really set us up for success. So thank you for doing that. Questions? Okay, thanks.
Next up will be Chief Lundgren and Shawna Ernst from SPD.
Good morning.
Do you want the overtime study or the personnel?
The, the second one, the overtime study. And am I able to drive from here?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, good morning, members of council, Council President. We want to provide you with an update on our staffing and overtime situation that we find ourselves in this year, mid-year. We have seen, since twenty-twenty, we have seen ninety-one commissioned officer departures, which is much higher than the average rate that we've experienced. And we currently have seventy positions that are vacant, that we, or that we cannot, we cannot utilize for their primary purpose. Those people might be in training, they might be vacancies, or they may have an injury or FMLA leave. So at the same time, we've experienced a call for service increase across the board in Priority One, Priority Two, and Priority Three calls for service, which are our most acute, that require an officer to, to actually respond to an address. A thirteen-point-six percent increase. And we were, we were seeing this trend last year. We were anticipating we're going to have additional strain on our patrol. So that is why we allocated additional resources from our traffic units, NROs and DV unit. We've been able to maintain our level of traffic enforcement. And we've, with the precinct model being geographic, and assigning patrol by the precinct model, we've been able to also maintain that, that neighborhood meeting touch. We, all of our, all of our neighborhood councils are seeing officers from those precincts, where the NROs were, were attending before. Additionally, at the state level, our training requirements have increased through the reforms. Officers are required an additional forty hours of training every three years. Our new officers, that training requirement is immediate and goes into effect now. For some of us who have been around a while, we will get phased in over time. But this has required us to go and send some of our personnel to be, become trainers for these new classes. Some of our newer officers are attending them. And with our, our increased demands on patrols, patrol staffing, what, what we're seeing is, if we want to maintain the coverage for patrol, we're having to do additional training on overtime. Our twenty-twenty-three staffing model, the success is that by reallocating those resources, what we see, when we hit our minimum staffing numbers, is we're, we're getting an additional seven to twelve officers that are working every single day across the city. And so the benefits we've seen, obviously, better public service, we have more officers that are available to respond to calls, which results in better response times, as well as we've seen a thirteen, over thirteen percent reduction in our sick leave per officer, fourteen, fourteen-point-five percent reduction in the level of officer injuries, and a twenty-two percent reduction in uses of force. So all that to say, that staffing is the number one, the number one factor. It's driving our costs, it's driving overtime right now for SPD.
I had a quick question before you leave that slide. You said that you've been able to maintain the same traffic enforcement. And I'm just wondering, what your metric? Is it like citations issued, stops made? How do you, how do you?
Sure.
Demonstrate that.
So by citations, citations are tracking almost identical to when we had the traffic unit independent. We have an expectation that patrol teams are going to be conducting traffic enforcement when they're able to do so. And then we've also done some additional, as we discussed yesterday, some additional emphasis patrols outside of patrol team to, to try and get after the, the speeding, the reckless driving, and those sorts of driving behaviors.
Thanks.
I do appreciate that. I know that in the Northeast, we had a traffic special out on upriver, and there was a lot of people driving well over sixty miles an hour on a thirty mile an hour road. So I, I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can continue to see some more of that, to hopefully reduce that amount of reckless driving. In here, the seventy positions that are vacant or can't be assigned to work, what is the, what is the number that are actually vacant versus those that are on light duty?
You might ask that. So this slide breaks that down, with twenty-one commissioned vacancies, twenty-one that are at the academy, or with an FTO and don't count towards staffing. And then obviously, the light, light duty and injured officers are there.
The, the twenty-one in the academy aren't going to then be the twenty-one that are vacant, right? That's twenty-one additional on top of the twenty-one in the academy, just to be clear.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry. Going back to the calls for service have increased thirteen-point-six, I didn't, I don't think I heard you say what the timeline was. Was that in this year alone, or is that over a span of years?
That's year over year.
Year over year.
Yes.
Which we already had a eleven thirteen percent increase over the last three or four years, on top of that.
Yes, calls for service are trending up. The, the community is requesting more service from our department.
And, and just for clarity, have you received any extra officers in that time period?
And we'll, we'll get to the trend. And so what we're, what we're funded for, we've been, we've been granted additional positions. It's filling and keeping those positions. It's so critical to get from where we are to where we need to be. Thank you. So if you look at the orange line, this is our hiring. In twenty-twenty, we were able to onboard forty new officers. Then it dipped down to twenty-four in twenty-twenty-one. In twenty-two, we had twenty-eight. And then so far this year, despite the fact we have, we're funded for three academies, we've, we've onboarded seventeen. So this counts both entry level as well as lateral officers. And we can see that we're, we're trending down. We don't know exactly how we'll finish years in, but over these few years, we're trending down on bringing people in, despite emphasizing tremendous effort in recruiting and trying to attract and compete for additional officers. The blue bars are our departures. And so in twenty-twenty-two, we experienced ten more people leaving than we had coming in to replace the spots. And so when you add that alongside the, the usually one-year period that it takes for an entry level to be hired up and being able to be counted towards staffing, that's a significant, that's a significant problem. We are seeing the same trend continuing this year. That projected bar is, is based on the fact that we think it'll be near what we had last year for attrition, maybe a little bit higher even, but we don't have any, any hard data. On the far column, the dark blue bar, that, the number of officers that we have, like Chief Schaefer was saying, that are eligible to retire. So sixty-five of our officers are eligible to retire right now. So that, that's just hanging in the, in the balance, and we don't know the timing on, on those, certainly. But they, we, we anticipate them in the next, you know, three to five years. So this is not a local problem. This is not something that we're experiencing that's unique to Spokane. We're seeing it across Washington State and across the nation. Staffing is the issue that's driving increased costs on overtime. And, and the recruiting environment is, is as difficult as it's been during my career. So the path to get to where we need to be from where we are now, recruiting, hiring, and retention are the, the top three. That's what we have to do. We have to be bringing in good talent and good quantity. The Guild contract that is currently under TA is going to be a very big retention tool, as well as have the potential to, to make us much more competitive, both with entry level and then with laterals as well. You know, potentially in the, in the future, going to a take-home car vehicle and being competitive with other agencies in the area that have take-home vehicles would also be something we could do to be more attractive. With those two top bullets, that, that'll make for a very competitive lateral package, I'm sorry. The Guild contract, as you know, contains certain provisions that will be very attractive, recognizing past experience and time with other agencies. And because we place value on that, not only the experience, but the fact that we will be able to hire somebody today and be able to use them in just a couple of months and count towards staffing. So we're very interested in attracting competitive laterals. Replacement of grant funding, we, we received a grant from the state for recruiting this year. We've exhausted those funds, having just a budgeted amount to be able to support those efforts, so that we can travel, we can go to colleges, we can go to military bases, other career fairs, and have a presence there and be, be attracting people who may not, maybe weren't thinking of Spokane, or they weren't thinking of police work, and bringing in some of those diverse and unconventional candidates. We plan to reassign a current sergeant at no expense to shift their duties to fully dedicate them to hiring. We need somebody that that's all they think about every day. And then adding a recruitment project employee that will be able to run that program and run our, our recruiting effort.
So some other things outside of recruitment that we would like to look at to address some of these costs are to reevaluate how we cost allocate and cost recover special events, because those are, those are a big overtime factor. We're adding events as more people are attending events. They're becoming more complex too, because of just the polarization in society. So we end up having to staff them more heavily. So we'd like to look at that as an option. Additionally, even though we have the downtown precinct now, and they're, they're covering the bar patrol, it still is a big cost on our department. It takes a lot of resources. So maybe look at some creative financing, talk to some of the businesses in downtown Spokane Partnership to see if there's a way to tie some funding for that into the bid. Yes.
I would, on that, I mean, I, I don't know exactly what the state would allow or, or prevent, but, I mean, I would be open to looking at some form of assessment that would go specifically to, you know, funding these services for the folks that are using the services. So the, the bars mainly, that, that is causing the impact.
Yeah, we, we want to do more research into that and see what is possible. A lot of businesses, when they need extra help, they pay extra duty rates, which we get fully reimbursed for. get fully reimbursed for, but that doesn't happen with the downtown bars, so we'd like to at least look at other ways to finance that. And then we've been providing additional overtime support near the former DOT camp and now the track shelter to visit neighborhood businesses, you know, people who live in that community that have some impacts, make sure kids get to school safely. So it's a benefit to the community, but it is a cost, and so we'd like to evaluate, how long do we do that? What does that look like? How is that funded? And then we'd like to create some sort of reserve account specifically for unplanned events, like if we were to have a large protest or a large event that turns into civil unrest, to have some funding that's on the books that could roll over every year so that we don't have to dip into our overtime budget for something like that, it would be nice to have. Yeah.
This has been bugging me for years.
Okay.
So when we talk about this, we also have to look at, for as long as I've been in City Hall, and it's been a while, when we have big national political races and we have big people coming into the community to campaign, and they run up charges in law enforcement mainly, I think, in coverage, and they don't pay them. And if we looked back in the records, there's a lot of those that are just, I don't know why we don't go after those candidates to pay the fees for all of the public safety.
Or refuse any dignitary protection unless they pay upfront, frankly.
Yeah, and that's certainly something we can talk about in the future. I know that when Public Safety Director McDevitt was here, we did a trial of sending bills to presidential campaigns and
And they don't pay them.
Yeah, they don't pay them, and I don't know that there's a mechanism at the municipal level to compel them to do so. It is interesting to say we won't provide public safety services. However, you know, going into this next year, that's going to be a presidential election year, there are other public safety interests related to not being there that may be more detrimental than the cost recovery. So it's something to think about, we certainly can talk about.
But I think there are two pieces, right? There's the specific protections for the individual, but then there's the public kind of protections. And I don't think anybody would suggest standing down on protecting the public. It's perhaps the other activities that might require a payment upfront.
If you go through the list, the past 20 years, it'd be fascinating to see how many of those bills didn't get paid. Can't we just send them to like collections or?
That's my frustration, we, every time we say, oh, we can't go back, but we'll do it next time, but then the next time comes, and I don't know if there's different people on the job or whatever it is, but we never seem to be very planned. So we know the campaigns, the presidentials are coming up, this not very, less than a year is when the primary will be here. So it'd be great to see a plan, maybe utilize City Legal to give us our options of what we can do, because you're just caught in the middle of it. It's kind of not really, you're just doing the work, but it's a higher level. But it would be great if you would push on City Legal to get your advice on how to get those funds, I think.
We certainly can have further discussion.
Yeah. Councilmember Kinnear has a question.
Thanks. I actually have two.
Okay.
The first one is, Charlie Portwright, when she was here, was working on some kind of system where that groups came into Spokane, and they would be required to take out a permit before they could have any kind of event. So that means that they were going to pay upfront, and I think we need to look at that again. So if you don't get a, if you don't have a permit, then you don't, you know, come to Spokane and have an event. It's real simple. The second thing is, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Cathcart's comment on the bar patrol. I think it would be beneficial to do an analysis of exactly where the issues are, what the costs are per area, and come up with some sort of system where they want extra security. They're going to have to be assessed rate, and I agree, we should be working with DSP on that. Right now, essentially, they're creating, if this was housing, it would slap them with chronic nuisance, but it's a business. And so I think we need to look at this as, how are the businesses trying to mitigate the problems? And if they're not, then what kind of assessment do we put on them so that they're not creating the problem and not trying to help solve the problem? Thanks.
I was just going to add that, at least anecdotally, the worst bar problems, they're not actually in the DSP boundaries, they're just outside. So that might have to get adjusted as well.
True, yeah. So the last item on this slide is just, sorry, feedback, is just that we tend to have better situational awareness for next year's budget later in the year. This past year, for example, we found out that we were becoming a secondary PSAP in October, and so if we could carve out a time where we have an opportunity to tell you things that are coming, that we didn't know about in the earlier summer budget cycle, I think that would be good for everybody.
I guess I don't know what a secondary PSAP is. Can I?
That is when we took over 911 call triage.
Oh, right.
Right. Yeah, we went from just being a dispatch center to actually talking to 911 callers.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, I mean, you guys can share with us at any point in time, any of your needs, and let us know, because it's helpful for us to have that frame of reference to know what is coming down. In fact, I would love to have just kind of at the beginning of the year or the end of the year, a list of just everything that you expect you might be coming and asking us for, so that we can just kind of plan ahead. Because it does seem like we get, we've previously had a lot of requests, and a lot of departments do this, but I think it's especially from SPD where, you know, we'll fulfill a request, and then a month later, it's like, oh, and we really need these two, and then we fulfill that, and then it's, we need these two, you know, and all important, but it would just be nice to have all of that in advance and be able to just plan ahead for it, so.
Sure.
I also just want to mention, Councilmember Cathcart proposed a law that would do that for the whole city. So, I mean, and that, and this year is maybe the transition year is a little harder, but we actually have said that is not just that you can, but you need to so that we can do a mid-year budget adjustment, which will be about a year from when you first proposed things, just took it. So that is actually our policy. So you can check off that. That is what you're supposed to be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good point.
So we wanted to give you an update on things we're doing right now to help solve this problem. So as Chief Lengren said, we need to hire our way out of this problem. Staffing is what's driving the overtime. So with your help and recommending community members to talk to, we have been working on our recruitment video that's coming along really well. We've gotten great results from that. We are implementing a skill bridge program. So that is a DOD program where somebody who's leaving military service can come and volunteer here, and while they're volunteering, they get their full DOD wages and benefits, and then that gives us a hiring pool. It also lets us market to spouses of military members who might be stationed at Fairchild, so it's a really good opportunity for us. We're working with civil service on that. And then we're moving to, we're moving our annual markup. So markup's when we do shift change, typically January. We decided that as both a tool to recruit, but also to support our current staff, we're going to move it to September, so that officers on patrol have the same schedule for the whole school year instead of having to switch mid-school year. So we're starting that this year. We're actively recruiting for more volunteers and reserve officers to try to beef up our support to the community without additional, without a lot of additional costs, or some. And then we're working on our strategic plan and getting that finalized, so you have that document. We're also changing how we do our internal budget so that we give a more robust list, a more complete picture to, you know, Mayor's administration and to you when we're doing the budget process. And then we're working on that cost benefit analysis for dispatching services, that's underway. We've applied for more grants this year than we have in years prior. We're implementing new technology, especially the Axon Records Project, to reduce the amount of time it takes officers to write their reports, which will reduce OT. And then we're looking for any other cost savings that we can find, a lot with technology, but across the department, we're trying to be good stewards of our finances.
Could you talk more about the cost benefit analysis on dispatch? Because now we have moved all of our fire piece, secondary PSAP to Shrek.
Correct.
And so there's questions about, even though there's a lot of good reasons for the current system we have as far as costly, so is that what you're looking at?
That is what we're looking at. So we're comparing both the cost of providing our own call triage and dispatch compared to what Shrek would charge us, but we're also looking at the level of service to make sure that we're not transferring duties from dispatchers to officers too. So we're trying to be really comprehensive with that, so you have a complete picture.
When do you think you'll have some conclusions from that?
I'm hoping within the next few weeks.
Okay.
Four weeks, probably.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And I might add, Council President, that despite the fact that we kind of quickly and unexpectedly became a secondary PSAP, and we had to ramp up staffing in a short amount of time, and we also incurred a lot of overtime, we were able to, we project this year that our expense on the dispatch side will be about half, our additional expense will be about half of what Shrek had originally offered to do the same work for. So we think there's an opportunity to maybe do, to maintain a level of service that we're accustomed to and do it in a more financially efficient way.
Oh, go ahead, and Councilmember Kinnear after, Councilmember Cathcart.
Okay, two things. One is, did I miss it? Were there any projections on overtime numbers for '23 that you guys have?
We do. We've been working on that, and I believe that Tanya is going to share some of that with you.
Okay, great. No, that's great. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, not a short-term cost savings by any stretch of the imagination, but I do think a long-term cost savings is to move more in the direction of neighborhood policing. We've talked about this a lot. Obviously, staffing shortages makes that very challenging at the present time, but I think if we continue to make that our goal long-term, that that's the direction we're going to get folks in our neighborhoods, foot, bike, et cetera. I think that's going to be a great crime deterrent. I think it's going to reduce a lot of the resource, you know, expenditures that we have, and I think it just creates a better relationship. So I just want to just say it again so that people don't mistake that there is still a concerted effort, I think, to achieve that. It's just a very challenging time to actually get it implemented, so.
Thank you.
And then Lori.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Back when we first was talking about Shrek and police and fire joining, I remember distinctly that some of the command staff was adamantly against going to the Shrek model because you would be compromising quality and officer safety, there are a number of things. What has changed that would make it okay for police to consider going to Shrek? I don't see any changes, and so I'm a little concerned that you're not going to have the same rigor that you do now, and the public would be compromised.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. We have a high level of confidence in our current employees and the level of service that they're providing. And what I would say is, I don't know that anything has changed from our prior conversations, what I would say is that we have a responsibility to put facts and figures, quantitative information together to try and paint the picture as we look at the future there. But I share your opinion.
Any other questions for this segment? All right, great. Thank you for that update.
And finally, our Chief Financial Officer, Tanya Wallace.
Can you bring that up to Kobe? Thank you. So Councilmembers, yes, we knew that you would be asking for the numbers, and I want to just also thank Kevin Schmidt, he's the Accounting Manager for Public Safety, both Fire and Police, and Shawna Ernst. They have been looking at extreme details for several weeks so that we could prepare these numbers for you. We really wanted to take a look at the numbers that we're going to show you here to determine what we started seeing in the last quarter of 2022, some of the changes that came about, such as dispatch and the 2022 one-year collective bargaining agreement, how those might impact 2023, because those did come in late afterwards. And then what we were seeing after the year 2022 closed, we wanted to determine, is that going to be systemic or was that an anomaly? So we're going to kind of show that to you, but I'm going to just start you right off with budget to projection comparisons, and I apologize that this is kind of small. But 2023, $65 million is the sum total of all the personnel accounts in the Police Department within the general fund. There is a relationship between base wages and then overtime. Here, we were assuming about a 6% composition would be overtime relative to all of the personnel costs. But based on the projections of what we've done with a very detailed review, looking at 11 pay periods and then what we saw at the closeout of '22, we are seeing that with the vacancies and the increased call of services of nearly 14%, and how those calls are being operationalized, when you have SWAT, when you have the tact teams coming onboard, it's a lot more officers involved in those calls. It is increasing overtime hours, so our composition is changing as well. Basically, overtime is taking a larger proportionate share of all the personnel costs. So here are the numbers. I'm just preparing you. Well, first, let me give you a quick overview of some of the causes. So certainly, base wages, when we look at just base wages compared to the vacancies, it's really on point. There is a slight overage, and this was really at the end of the budgeting process. There was a $600,000 deduction from the police personnel budget. Otherwise, this would have been really a little bit over on just base wages.
Was that related to? Can you remind me?
That was just an adjustment that
Was that something council did or a joint decision? Or I just, I can't recall that.
That was a council adjustment.
Okay.
Yes. And then temporary project impositions, we did take a look at this, and we do believe that that is also going to be a little over, and this is largely related to that recruiting efforts and those background checks that need to be done. We're also having three BLEA academies, which is one additional academy than what we normally have, so we are expecting that to also increase. And then, of course, overtime. We are short-staffed in terms of response to all those calls at a 14% increase on those calls. Additional pay items, again, if we don't have officers in those positions, we are going to pay for shift differentials, add-to-pays, and to respond to those calls. And then benefits. Benefits that we pay overall, about 20% of benefit, is the overall load for personnel. However, when you look at those additional pay items, shift differential, where it's just a person involved, you're at least going to pay retirement and FICA, and that is nearly a 14% load. You're going to pay medical, whether they're working overtime or whether, just for the position, so medical doesn't necessarily go up, but you're at least paying 14% on all of those additional wage items. Also, and I have to have a correction here, August 2022, but it was actually signed in October of '22, still after the '22 budget was done, the CBA for that year was approved, and there was a VIBA contribution that we did not anticipate for the '23 budget that increased there. So here are the numbers. So you can see, these are the budget, these are grouped, there's a sum total of $65 million, that is what is approved in the adopted budget. Again, each item was very carefully reviewed through all pay periods, and then you see the projection. We are projecting more on the higher side. We do think that there could be some ranges, actually, but we want to be as prepared as possible. So the ultimate difference is So the ultimate difference is 8.7 million. I will tell you, some of the things that did surprise me in looking at particularly some of the additional pay, the callbacks that happened is, like in February, and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, because he pulled up a lot of this detail. So in February, we'd have callbacks in one pay period where it was about $11,000 for that pay period. Then we saw one in May, $76,000. So a lot of these items are very dependent on the event that is happening and how the officers are responding, and they are appearing to be very unpredictable at this time.
Is your, so this is specific to police. So is your assessment of fire the same as the chief's, that there likely will not be overtime that goes beyond what was budgeted for?
That is correct. When we looked at fire overtime, we always start from a high level. But when we built the budget, or when we developed the budget for fire, we knew that the first six months were going to have a higher overtime percentage than the next six months, understanding when they were going to come out of their academy. And of course, fire, when they come out of the academy, they move into operations. That's a little different than police. With three BLIA's, they come out of the academy and there's, or they get hired, they go to the academy, and then they do the joint operations. So it is going to take a little bit of time to come out of this.
Just a quick question before you leave that screen. Is that taking into account the TA contract?
Yes. The TA contract, or at least like in the wages and some of those other add-to-pays, we included, because the 2022 CBA had not yet been resolved or agreed upon at that time, we made an assumption, and the assumption was all built in with the additional assumption for the '23.
I know, but now we know what the '23 numbers are.
We do. And there's that line called the 2023 competitive pay adjustments, because it is, the TA that you have right now is a little more robust than what we assumed building the budget. Remember, we built the budget about six months ago. In fact, we've just finished Phase 1 that goes under review for 2024. So we do have that projected increase for those other competitive pay items that are in the tentative agreement at this time.
But I guess, so are you saying that the base wage budget number, that is equivalent to the TA that's out there for regular pay, not talking about the add-ons?
Yes. So the overtime budget, it is worth just to mention of how did we determine the overtime budget for 2023? Well, at the time we were building the budget, we actually used five years of actual data, which seemed like a fairly good basis in order to determine, because our intent was budget the base wages as accurately as we can, but also budget overtime as accurately as we can. So we somewhat discarded how we were budgeting in the past, and we said, let's look at actuals. And so we did that. We looked at a couple of different methodologies, and we did the overtime percent as a percent of base wages. Looking at 2017 through 2021, again, five years of actual data, it was fairly consistent. There are some anomalies, because certainly in 2020, we had a pandemic, businesses shut down, but there were also protests going on. So between special events and protests, things kind of swapped out. Then in 2022, we weren't quite all the way through 2022. When we built the budget, we were only about halfway through 2022. So that is, you can see 2023, where we did do a correction previously, we're budgeting a little over $2 million. We did increase the budget. We did try to stay within those overtime relationships. But now you see what is projected. Very significant, very different than what the five years of actual data was showing us. So just a quick cover of some extra duty and additional pays. What we are seeing, extra duty, as the Police Department pointed out, that is offset by businesses paying for that additional service. So while we see an increase in our projections for that, you're also going to see a proposed increase in revenue. So the net impact is zero on that. But it does speak to that businesses are requesting more of our police officers to provide that added security, just like our citizens and residents are calling in more for services as well. Additional pay items, out-of-grade. Again, if we have vacancies, we're going to pay folks out of grade. The standby pay, we have seen a pretty good jump in standby pay. Shift differentials, holiday pay, education pay, specialty pay, and deferred compensation. All of those items are benefits and will also increase as we continue. Leave payouts. Leave payouts are something that happen when an officer leaves the employment for retirement or other reasons. But we also have annual vacation and comp payouts that happen in December. We did see in 2022 December, a jump in those leave payouts. And this is logical, because certainly, as officers are working more overtime, they have less ability to utilize their leave banks, which means those banks increase, and then we pay them out in December. So part of our leave payout projection is based on what we saw in 2022, and we're just going to assume a similar pattern, since we're seeing a similar pattern happen with overtime hours. But I will say, looking at overtime hours, we are seeing a significant increase in the number of overtime hours, for all the reasons that the department has stated. So, police, how do we solve this? For 2023, we also took a close look at a lot of their revenue. There are some adjustments that we can make, and you can see, hopefully you can see, line three, $485,000. That is a good coverage. That is $250,000 for the third BLIA that we can get reimbursed for as well. But also, that offsets the $263,000 that we're anticipating for that extra duty that businesses are requesting. So that is an equal offset there. We're also suggesting line five, state reform funds, to help cover some of the training overtime. There is a remaining balance, so we would ask that that would be added in for the revenue to help cover that cost. And then line six and seven, transfer in traffic calming. This was what council allocated for traffic enforcement. And as you heard from the Police Department today, traffic enforcement does continue in a slightly different way, but it is still happening.
But just to be clear, those dollars were for specific patrols around schools, because they're school radar. And we had a long conversation yesterday, and they were not interested in that model. So those were very specific. It wasn't just general patrols.
Understood. This is just a proposal.
No, I know. But I just want to, but you made it, or I heard it, a little more general. It was very specific for, that's how we could justify it, because it was around the schools and the parks. And that's still open, but so far, operationally, that isn't melding with the current proposal out there.
And then also, Public Safety Levy Fund. We did look at the levy fund. We do believe that there could be about $400,000 of savings in that fund that could also be transferred in to help cover the costs that are being incurred in the General Fund. And then you do see those differences that were also shown on the projected difference, coming to a net deficit of about $6.5 million.
Is the Criminal Justice Fund up there? Am I not seeing it?
You are not seeing Criminal Justice. We are not projecting that there would be any funding available from the Criminal Justice Fund at this time.
Is that based on an assumption that we're going to use that for track? Or is that based on just the estimates that are in the account?
Both, both. I think that the variable...
Have we voted to allocate that to track?
Well, and the last thing that I heard just like in the last few hours was that our expenses on track are lower, so we might not need to use as much of the Criminal Justice. So there might be the ability. But that's only a few hours old, I'm sure. Well after this was prepared, so.
Yes, it was after this. So there might be, I think, the biggest capacity of Criminal Justice dollars will be from the courts, where it's taking a little longer to ramp up than anticipated.
Okay.
And then, overall, you can see, this is General Fund recommended solutions, because General Fund, when you fold the police into the General Fund, there are other revenue opportunities. So the blue, light blue lines, do align with the previous slide that you saw. But from the General Fund, and we're going to talk a lot more about this next Thursday, is my understanding, so I don't want to go into a lot of detail here, but do you know that we do have other recommended solutions to cover the entire General Fund? And the bottom-line intent is to cover all these differences and maintain the unappropriated fund balance through 2023. But again, this is going to have a larger conversation, but I wanted to emphasize that even though this is 6.5, there are other solutions to help offset that 6.5, and it will come in the package for discussion next Thursday.
Can you tell us what happened since, I think in May, the presentation on the General Fund, we were going to have a surplus of $400,000, and now it's in the millions in the deficit? What are the, what's the information that we discovered in that month that shifted that?
Great question, great question. Yes, so this, actually, it was like May 4th, we finished up projections to meet the ordinance, and those projections were done at a fund-level line-item detail review. Now, projections also assume, which this does not assume, any savings from any other department, that we would sweep from them and take their budget down. The projections do assume that some departments will have some savings in those projections. And there was a highlighted, yes, we didn't go into this level of detail, but it flagged that we go into this level of detail. At that time of those projections, with only about seven or eight payroll periods in for that, we were estimating that police would be at least $1.5 million over in overtime. But other accounts that were flagged were, the VIBA contributions were flagged, the payouts, call-out payouts were flagged. So there were several accounts that were flagged, saying, we need to take a closer look at that. So projections, that's what they do, is flag us on, we need to take a closer look. And so here's the result of that closer look.
And can you go to the General Fund one again? So what's the General Fund projected?
These are recommended solutions.
So that's not the, but what would you say, so now that you've dug in more, you've followed the flags, and so instead of a $400,000 surplus, what do you think is the current deficit to get to?
I would have to update those projections, because again, the only department that really flagged in those projections was police on the line items. So other departments have not been reviewed to see where they're going to fit. So like this recommendation assumes, you can see right up there, assumes that departments will fully spend their annual budget and receive all estimated revenue. The projections, on the other hand, say, let's look at trend and see, maybe revenues come in stronger, weaker, but also, let's look at how departments are actually spending, and they might come in over and under as well. And certainly, what we saw for 2022, and that report will be presented to you, you've received a physical report, but the presentation will come to you July 17th, is that a lot of departments did come under budget. So when we see this for a budgetary adjustment, we're assuming no budgetary adjustments for other departments. And so that's part of the difference there.
And when are we going to have the projection for all the departments? Or not? Or is that in the works?
As of right now, there is no plan to update projections for other departments, because nothing flagged substantially that warrants that effort. And right now, with staffing, all staff is hands-on deck to get the 2024 budget and start reviewing solutions for that.
I guess I would ask, though, I mean, if potentially we're facing a $7.5 million or more, because there's other questions out there, but $7.5 million deficit, I mean, isn't that the flag that we have to look at every department, because we have no means of solving for that? I mean, we don't have reserves, much reserves capacity. Certainly not that I would be comfortable touching. I can't speak for others, but I just feel like that's the flag that says you now have to look at the department level, because we're going to have to find $7.5 million somewhere.
And you're exactly right, and we are looking at that through the lens of the 2024 budget.
But tweaking budgets now, wouldn't that set us up for having something that's more achievable and reasonable for the 24 budget?
Possibly, possibly. I mean, coming to these projections and these, or not projections, this recommendation is a month's worth of work to, you know, from the flag that was raised for police, this is a month's worth of work.
Councilmember Kinnear has a question.
I do, thanks. I'm rapidly losing my voice, I apologize. I'm concerned about that line item with ARPA money. Go into more detail, please.
Again, I want to save stuff for next Thursday. Next Thursday is really when we go into detail on these items. I just felt that it was important to talk about this and how we're folding this into Mayor Woodward's recommendations for the 2023 solutions.
Okay, then heads up, I'll be asking this question on Thursday, because I need details on this. That concerns me. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? I have one question for someone from police leadership, and that is, I've heard, when I, we talked with our experts on police overtime and things like that, they identified that in past years, we've increased the number of people going to calls. And I've seen that before, and I'm just wondering what, if you have any sense, if you can give us, when those changes have been made? Because part of it, we look at the staffing, but I think also, operationally, we've changed how many people need to go to a certain class of call. And I'm just wondering if, in your mind and your history, if you could kind of tell us when that happens and how many more people and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. That change came with the state-level reforms. And basically, the rationale is, we are doing what we can. We're at that reasonable care standard. We are trying to do everything we can to reduce the potential for use of force. Under RCW 10-120-020, where it talks about using reasonable care and use of force, it says that when possible, you must use all de-escalation tactics that are available. So it's not, when possible, consider using them, it says you must. So when we look at what is considered de-escalation by the state's definition and the intent of this section in RCW 10-120-010, Section 2, actions by a peace officer that are intended to minimize likelihood of the need to use force during an incident, attempting to slow down or stabilize the situation so that more time, options, resources are available to resolve the situation. We have to create physical distance, having one officer that's designated just for communication so that people don't get confused, and they're having multiple officers trying to tell them to do different things at the same time. And requesting and using available support and resources. So we've seen, we're going to set our officers up for success. We want to send them with additional resources. We see that our SWAT team, year-to-date, has been utilized at a rate twice what it was last year, and that's what we're doing. We are slowing things down. We're bringing in hostage negotiators. We've added members to the team. We're bringing in our bomb squad on those calls, because they have robotics that can go and remotely communicate and also observe. We're using drone assets. We're doing everything that we can, and it's been successful so far, but it's more labor-intensive, and it takes longer with more people.
Can you, and I think everybody can picture that sort of intense situation, but my sense from talking to the Matrix people is that even just, you know, one person's kind of acting out a little bit on the sidewalk, instead of two officers, it might be four to six officers that are showing up. But that's just anecdotal. But I'm just wondering if you could just kind of give us, as a practical, not so much on the big events, which that was very helpful, too, but just kind of, a call comes in, and how many cars dispatch to it?
Absolutely. So domestic violence call, for instance, we'll say, one that doesn't involve weapons from, at least, we don't have information weapons are being used. from, at least we don't have information weapons are being used, a physical assault between two people that live together. We might have sent two officers, we will dispatch three. But I have to point out, the way they define physical force in the law now is any other act exerted upon a person by an officer to compel, control, constrain, or restrain the person's movement. The only actions by the officer that are excluded are pat downs, incidental touching, verbal commands, or compliant handcuffing. So the situation that you were talking about, somebody who just maybe isn't quite on board, and we have to take a little time, and we have to talk them into handcuffs, we have to try and de-escalate them. The legislature is telling us, we don't want you grabbing on and taking arm control unless you have to. So take a little more time, let's talk to them. If it's not safe, we're going to have to grab on to them. But in the past, officers may have said, while they're not compliant, we don't anticipate they're going to become compliant. Time is of the essence. We're going to move in with two officers and take control of the person. And most of the time, that would work without turning into something more. But what we're finding, what we're finding now, we have an obligation in that situation, even if we don't think they're going to comply, to slow it down within reason and give it a little more time. On standoffs, we've, for many years, we've been trying to bring people to us rather than going in and serving a search warrant and getting someone, unless there's really unusual circumstances. But we try to get them to come to us. But the amount of time we're going to give them, with all of our teams assembled, is going to be more, because we understand that to be our responsibility and our call from the legislature.
So, but again, overgeneralizing, but is it kind of a, what used to be two is now three, or, but I've seen somewhere, there's like, it seems like there's four to six people, and I don't know if that was just an aberration, like I'm not monitoring your stuff. But is it more like one extra officer as opposed to multiple, assuming no weapon, no super scary things?
It's all fact-dependent, and we have our dispatchers that are making decisions based on the information they have, and they send the number of officers they believe are consistent with what we're trying to accomplish. And then when the officers arrive on scene and they're making their assessment, and they're gathering information, and they can adjust, I would rather an officer bring extra people and not need them. We don't want them, obviously, if they're not needed, we don't want them on a call for a long period of time. But if they are needed, and they're serving a role to that end, to protect the community, to protect the person involved, to protect the officers, then that's that philosophy shift that we understand.
And did we, as a department, start going that direction even before 2021? It seems like if I look back over 10 or 12 years, that as part of the work with the Department of Justice and use of force, that we're kind of going in that direction anyway?
So not necessarily with the dispatch protocols, that's new. However, de-escalation, we've been using, but everybody has a little bit different understanding what that means. And certainly, Washington's example is very progressive, it's very intentional in what it wants to accomplish. And so I think, yeah, for the safety of the officers, for the safety of the community, and for the effort of trying to reduce the use of force, that's what we're doing.
And again, just, it seems like, we've talked a lot about the factors of people retiring and morale and things like that, but it seems like this is a pretty big factor in terms of using person hours actively engaged with the community, is this higher level of care that our officers have been trained to do and are doing effectively?
So what I will say is that not every single call has additional officers from what we used to send. But yes, it is resource-intensive, and we understand that to be our mandate and the way that we're supposed to perform. So it is, it's a cost. It's just a change in the thought process. Fire is way ahead of us. They have guidelines. If you have this situation, you have two people that are assigned to this task, you have two people that are there to rescue them if something goes wrong. Police has been much more individualized to the agencies, and staffing is different in different parts of the country. They have different tactics based on those staffing levels. And so I think we're just kind of revisiting what is appropriate.
Yeah. And then slide, I don't know if you have any feedback on this, but when we heard from the matrix, both fire and police, they talked about different shift models of hours, and they had some pretty strong recommendations for police. And I'm just wondering where the department is from a leadership, obviously, there's bargaining issues, but where, what's your assessment of that, or what processes are you going through to? Because it seemed like that would also reduce overtime, according to them.
So it's kind of a push-pull proposition. So from strictly a resource allocation standpoint, the 12-hour shifts are a better cover to be able to schedule the most officers per time. However, also in that report, it talks about the length of shift and the negative effect of having shifts that are longer than, I believe, 10 hours. So even in their own report, while they acknowledge that matching the officers to the calls and having the most officers available to respond to emergencies, the 12-hour shift is superior, they also caution against having longer-period shifts, just because of the impact on the officers, their health and morale. So, you know, we certainly, certainly always are going to look at the best way to try and allocate the people that we do have that are responding to these calls, so we can serve the public. We also have to be mindful that we're in a position where recruiting, retention, and hiring is important, our current schedule. Due to the amount of time between work weeks that allows officers the four- and five-day weekends with the longer five-day, longer shifts, is very popular. And so we don't have any immediate plans to change at this point, but we're always assessing.
Well, it'd be great if you would come back to us in a little bit and say, hey, this is police department leadership response to that report. This is what we're going to, because, you know, we spent a lot of money, we were waiting, we were hopeful, okay, this is going to really, and it kind of delivered, and then, I'm sure you all are talking about it, but we don't. So it'd be great to set a time, not right away, but come back and say, all right, we thought about it. This is what we think we should do or not, here's why. So, but anyway, I really appreciate all your answers, and we're over time. But Councilmember Kinnear--
Yeah, real quick, does anybody recall what our staffing numbers were prior to the recession?
Which--
For--
2007--
Yeah, prior to '07. It was higher than our current, was it not? Because we lost a significant number, and I know we've slowly been regaining that, but did we get back to that number?
If we could fill all our spots, we'd be at the highest staffing, we'd be at the high watermark for our department. But it hasn't moved tremendously. Even during my career, we were right in the neighborhood of 290 to 300 officers when I was hired in '97, so--
Because it just seems like we are really, I mean, in a very challenging situation. I mean, the state has effectively increased the cost of policing. Obviously, just the natural economic environment is increasing the cost of policing. You've seen a 13% increase in calls. I think, you know, we've, we're down 70 officers, we'd like to have a lot more. I mean, we are just in a real tough situation, and yet, all of that, and we're $7 million, you know, potentially overrun overtime, and it's just, you know, figuring this out, I think we would have, long-term, there's actually an opportunity, I think, really, to bolster the department. But obviously, short-term, we've got some massive challenges that we're going to have to get past. Sean, did you have a--
Yeah, we did have a slide, it's attached in the appendix of the slide deck that you all have, that compares the numbers in the year 2000. So population has increased--
Yes.
35,000. We are at our highest level of officers--
Even per capita?
Compared to 2000, yeah, it's in the slide deck if you want to take a look.
Thank you.
But our officers per thousand has actually dropped. So that's the other--
So per capita, we have gone down?
Exactly. Per capita, we're down from the year 2000, even though our overall numbers increased.
Now, if all 70 were filled, is that still true?
No, we're better per capita if all 70 are filled.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're authorized--
Yes.
Better, it's just that in practicality, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And is that everything?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for your participation and information. Thanks to everyone. We adjourned. We will be back regular City Council on Monday. Have a great weekend. Take care of yourself if you can, take care of somebody else.